I'll call this meeting of the Huron School Board to order. I now ask the business manager to note the roll and ask everybody to rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item is adoption of the agenda. Agenda is in front of you. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Adoption.
I'd second that. Motion and a second to adopt the agenda. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed say no. That motion carries. Four dates to remember. We have the ESL Summer School Program running June 5th through June 29th. That's Monday through Thursday from 8:00 to 1:00. We have the Summer Nutrition Program breakfast hours from June 5th to June 29th at the middle school are 7:45 to 8:15. That's Monday through Thursday only, no breakfast on Fridays. The lunch program runs the same dates, June 5th to June 29th, from 11:00 to 12:45 for lunch. And then on Fridays is 11:45 to 12:45. Those are all at the middle school. And then from July 3rd through August 4th, the middle school will host the summer nutrition program for lunch from 11:45 to 12:45, Monday through Friday. Then the next regular school board, which will be our annual meeting for the Board of Education, will be at 5:30 PM on July 10th here in the Instructional Planning Center in the Huron Arena. The next item is community input for items not on the agenda. Is anybody here present for that? I don't see anybody coming forward, so move on to number seven, conflict disclosure and consideration of waivers. In this case Superintendent Terry Nebelsek has submitted waiver 2017-53 for a conference he went to for the Superintendent Association.
Right.
Huron.
I went to the school administrator at South Dakota's Wild West Leadership Conference. They bring in speakers from different parts of the state and different, some education, some not, in order to present. And we're just asked as members of the association if we would present. And so I presented on the changing dynamics of community and how our community is pulled together to work through that. I did not know that there was going to be a gratuity, and there was. And I have plenty of unused vacation days, and so I asked for advice from Mr. Christofas on how to handle it, but I wanted to make sure that you folks were aware that there was a gratuity that came with doing that and that I did take vacation that day. And the gratuity's a hundred dollars. I don't mean to have a mystery here.
Yeah. Okay. So we're looking for...
I'd make a motion to approve the waiver, that it is fair, in terms of the transaction or contract are fair, reasonable, and not contrary to the public interest.
Second. There's a motion and a second for that motion. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed say no. That motion carries. Now for the consent agenda. The superintendent of schools recommends approval of the following. A, board approval of new hires. We have Rod Hook for summer grounds help, Dada Poe as the assistant coach for boys soccer, Rhonda DeJean as a concessions worker, Kyla Henson as a classroom leader for the TAP program, Penny Dooley in food service, Jennifer Conwell as a substitute bus driver. Then we have one contract for board approval, Tara Olvestead as a first grade teacher at the Buchanan K-1 Center. We have no resignations. We do have a few bills for approval that are in the board packet. And then we have an open enrollment request, OE-2017-01 for board approval. That is the consent agenda. Any member can ask a question about an item or ask that an item be moved to the new business section for action there. Or approve it all in one motion.
I'd move approval of the consent agenda as spread.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed say no. That motion carries. And I'll turn it over to the superintendent to celebrate successes in the district.
Good evening. As we well know, history would tell us that in the middle of the summer, there's not nearly the activities to report on. Do have a couple of thank yous. Thank you to the Huron Regional Medical Center for partnering with the Huron Wellness Committee to sponsor the Fourth Annual Free Community Rainbow Run. I thank you to Angie Thomas, the cross-country team and parents here in Regional Medical Center, the Madison staff and others for volunteering their time and helping with actually conducting the rainbow run. So again, thank you to both of those groups and let's, as usual, quiet June.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to reports to the board. Our first report is on the NWA Spring Report from Sherri Nelson.
The purpose of today's report is to share our NWA Spring data. The NWA assessment is a computer adaptive assessment that our district purchases. We give it three times a year, and we do it in the fall, the winter, and the spring. And we use the data formatively to guide our instruction and to measure growth. And then we also use it summatively to measure growth, student learning, and to evaluate our curriculum and instruction. So the first thing I'd like to do is talk about some terminology. The student growth norms, School Conditional Growth Index, gives us the opportunity to compare between schools as far as growth. The index incorporates conditions that affect growth, including the weeks of instruction and the starting grade level mean RIT. A value of zero indicates growth has matched projection. The Conditional Growth Percentile translates the school's Conditional Growth Index into a national percentile ranking for growth. So let's take a look at our school norms. First, we have our math. And when you look at this chart, you will see that nine out of 11 grades exceeded growth projections in math. A score of above a zero means that it exceeded growth projections. It is a little dark. I think it's the light bulb is what we decided possibly on the projector.
I was just wondering.
It's showing up good on the screen, but not here.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
So anything above a zero means that they exceeded growth projections. According to our NWA trainer, a growth percentile of 60 or higher is desirable if you want to close the achievement gap, anything higher than a 60. 50 is the norm, and 40 or below promotes a widening of the gap. Here's a look at our reading scores. And you will see that 10 out of 11 grades exceeded growth projections in reading. And our language scores, 7 out of 8 grades exceeded growth projections in language. And in science, 5 out of 5 grades exceeded growth projections. Now, for those of you that like to see data in another format, I'll show you a visual bar graph. The way this graph works is that in where our students will land based on their fall scores, and then the diamond is where that projection is, the blue line represents where they landed in the spring. So if you look at the chart, the diamond is where they were projected to land, and the blue, the top of the blue line represents where they actually landed. So this is another way of looking at the same information that I just showed you. Here's the math. And the reading. And science. There is no projected growth for grade 11. That's why there's no diamond there, but you can see where the growth compares to the other grades. Okay, so we've been talking about school norms. Now we're going to switch to individual student growth norms. So here's a couple things about the terminology. The first is the percent that meets projection indicates the percentage of students whose individual RIT scores met or exceeded their individual growth goals. And the Conditional Growth Percentile indicates the middle value of the student's group of conditional growth percentiles if they were ordered from smallest to largest. So as you know, our board goal is that all students will exceed projected growth on the NWA assessment. And so if you look at the column on the left, that's the percent of students that met or exceeded their projection. And the ones that are highlighted in yellow mean that those grades, more than 50% of the students, met or exceeded their growth projections. Now, 100% meeting their growth goal is a very aggressive goal, but you can see that we are really starting to climb up now with numbers in the 70s and the 80s of individual students meeting their projected growth. So here is math. The right-hand column indicates where they fall with their growth compared to other students in the nation that started at the same spot in the fall. Here's math, and this is reading.
Say again the significance of the red and the yellow?
The yellow means that more than 50% of the students in that grade met their growth goal.
Okay.
The red would be below 50%, and our goal is 100.
Right. Okay.
Here's language. And you're all going to see that for grades 3 through 10 because kindergarten through second grade does not take this assessment, and there is no projection for juniors. And here's our science. And the lower grades do not take the science assessment. However, next year, the fifth grade is going to. Okay, so we've been talking about student growth. Now we're going to switch to achievement, and we're going to talk specifically about the percentile related to achievement. And this is the percentage of students in the NWA National Norm Sample that this group of students' mean RIT or their average RIT score equal or exceeded. So what we're looking for here is we're taking a look at their achievement percentile in the fall when they started and where they landed in the spring. And of course, we want to see our students move up in the percentile rankings. And so when you take a look at this first chart for math, you will see that nine out of 11 grades moved up in percentile ranking. I highlighted the green because those were double-digit increases. And so I think they're especially worth noting when you can move double-digit increases. This one is math. Here is reading. 11 out of 11 grades moved up in the percentile ranking for their student achievement in reading. And again, the green represents double-digit increases. And here's the language. Eight out of nine grades moved up in the percentile ranking. And science. Five out of five grades moved up in the percentile ranking for science. So what does this mean? Here's a quick summary. When you talk about our student, or our school, growth norms indicate that most grades have exceeded growth expectations in all tested areas. And our school growth norms indicate that most grades are closing the achievement gap in all subject areas. When you look specifically at students, which is important to do because when you look at a whole school, a few students that grow tremendously can hide scores of others. But when you look at individual student growth, we see that 50% or more of our students have met or exceeded their growth goals in most tested areas. And then finally, when you take a look at achievement and the percentile ranking in our subject areas, they have increased, and most notably in reading, every grade increased their achievement percentile ranking. What questions can I answer for you?
Oh, I'll start in order to warm them up.
All right.
Can we go back one at a time to like, okay, now like, let's go with just the science first. First of all, the achievement percentiles on the right column in the 57th, 72nd, and 59th, those are not only great growth, but those, those run with anybody, right?
This is achievement. This is not growth. This is, yep.
Right. So what I'm saying is that the 50th, because we're going to get to some very low percentiles is my point as we go backwards. So when we can get it all together, despite where kids from, come from, and how they're doing, and whatever, there's, there's three right there that are the 57th, the 72nd, and the 59th. And anytime you're above the 50th percentile in achievement, that means that you are above more in the nation than you are below more in the nation.
Right.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay. And obviously, we would be very discouraged if we don't constantly look at growth, which we'll do with the others, but we don't even have to look at growth with those scores right there.
Right.
Because they're not only growing, but they are strong percentile scores.
Agreed.
Okay, now go back. Okay, so, so we need to be super happy like in the growth that you see in the fifth grade from the 16th to the 26th, or in the seventh from the 40th to the 52nd. But we need to keep our eye on the prize that we're still starting with very low percentile scores compared to the nation, which shows that with our, the complexity of our population, we must stay diligent because of how far we need to come in order to get those scores we just described. Am I accurate in saying that?
Yes.
And my point is, is I just, I want the public to clearly understand that we just have a lot of work to do, and we know that the scores of our kindergarteners coming in the last three years have been lower than the previous year. So the challenge of taking kids from where they are to where they need to be is constant.
Yes. And, and when you start getting into some of these middle areas here, you know, when they're coming in now at 40, you know, it's going to take even more work to keep moving them up, you know? So 40 to 52 is 12, which, you know, may not seem like a lot, but they're coming in higher now as you're getting better.
That's even more significant, right. Right. And so then the red scores, the fourth grade should have gone up, but at least it's at the 29th and 28th percentile, where we had some good growth in others. But like our third grade, a 10th to 22nd percentile in language is very encouraging to me. Do we have any indicators why the third grade is so uniquely strong in how much they grew in language compared to their very frustrating plateau in mathematics? Any speculation from your office on that?
Not at this time.
I'm not expecting you to, I'm just wondering if you...
No. And this is language. Here's their reading. So let's see, we're at 22, the 22nd percentile for third grade in language, and we're at the 20th percentile for reading, so...
Right.
Fairly similar.
But now when you get to math, going backwards, there's two different scores on there that are low percentile and then didn't grow. And it's unique to third grade and unique to mathematics. Obviously, then it shows up again in the, in the ninth grade.
Yeah. Anytime you get data, if it's good data, you have more questions after you look at it, right?
Right. So school board, there's nothing you can't ask. I just wanted to warm you up a little bit to what I'm looking at because obviously I didn't wait till tonight to look at them.
Have you had a chance to look, for example, at the third grade as to was this a class that in second grade had a similar problem, or was this a unique year for them?
You know, that's that historical data piece that we look at in the fall, and so that'll definitely be something that we'll have to add on to that chart. You'll remember the chart from the fall where we looked through the seven years. And so we can follow it by students, and then we can follow it by the teachers that teach the curriculum and see which it is. So we'll take a look at that definitely in the fall with those scores.
You don't know, just from recall, where those kids were in second grade, do you?
No, I do not.
Nor do I, and I...
And I wouldn't want to say without having it in front of me.
Could you page back through?
To the, the achievement ones or the growth?
Don't, they get charts here.
Okay, so this was the math. And then here's the reading. Language.
It's like the second grade reading is incredible.
I didn't know about the reading, the third grade didn't. Now, when you say from where they started, that's comparing all students in the fall to all students in the spring.
This would be just...
It isn't just comparing fall to spring. Score is comparing...
The, the first one's growth is comparing their growth from where they started to where they landed, just in growth. These slides would be just be like their, kind of like their class rankings or their athletic rankings, you know, where they fall in the conference. That would be kind of the way this piece of data is.
So please correct me if I'm wrong, but the second grade came in as a 68th percentile. And we already seen where first graders are showing a huge growth in there for the second year in a row. We've got something rolling there. And they're coming in strong again in the fall. To hold that, 68, and stay at the 70th percentile may be as great an achievement as any of the others when you're dealing...
Exactly.
It's not just the two points, it's to be at the 70th percentile...
Yeah. They split ahead of some other schools, you know, basically in the norming.
If they're low, we need to see great growth. And if they're high, maintaining that, getting two points out of that was impressive to me.
Oh yeah, definitely.
These are national averages.
National norms, yeah. And it's a pretty big pooling of schools. It's not just a few. Other questions?
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much for that report.
Thank you.
I can ask someone to hit the lights back there, please? And then we will go back to our superintendent for his report.
Well, we've all been time conscious because, conscious because we want to have quality time for the goal-setting session. I want to thank all of you that attended the reports by the administrators two weeks ago. I say this obviously for the public that is watching, is that two weeks ago, for a couple of hours, the Board of Education met with each of the administrators in a roundtable discussion, and they took their board goals, starting with student achievement and working through each of the goals, and had administrators let them know how, how the year had gone. Now tonight, after adjournment, or after the, this portion of the meeting, they'll reopen in session, and they will start reviewing these goals and setting their goals for next year. And so that's the process that's going on. It's one of the things I wanted to explain in the superintendent's report. We'll have a report later in the year, as we do, on facility work, but reminder to you folks and to the public, a lot of infrastructure improvements take place, and I'm following the work on parking lots and the, and with facilities, we either get a little bit better or a little bit worse. And so right now, they're working on some improvements to the parking lot between the vocational school and the, and the middle school. And of course, that takes a lot of daily heavy traffic because that's where our bus exchange is, and they're working on that right now. Two of the four days with our consultant, Chris Weber, were last Thursday and Friday, and I was in Ohio those days, but received an update from Sherri Nelson, and I look forward to this week when he will meet with the high school faculty on Thursday, and then on Friday, he'll meet with the entire administrative academic team all day Friday. And so we'll be following that. Again, that work is how do we figure out the, how do we respond to students who are struggling academically? You know, what, what do we need to change in our strategies in order to reach them? Which should have an effect on the scores that we just looked at. And Monday, July 3rd, I just wanted to note, I sent all of you a memo on it, but to the public, if you are planning to meet with some part of the high school or central administration on Monday, I'd ask that you call ahead because most of the offices, people are taking a vacation day on Monday in order to connect the weekend to the 4th of July holiday. Most of the offices will be closed. So for security purposes, I've made the decision that the arena itself will be closed, so if they're going to meet someone in an office here, I would ask that you call that office ahead of time and make arrangements as to when you come in because this, the general walking into the facilities will not be open on July 3rd. And then I want to end my final report of the year with a personal thank you to John and Kerwin, who have been so loyal to the district, both of them returning for a second stint, which is a very unique. Kerwin came back to us and, and ran when we had an opening and, and answered the call when we did not have, there wasn't going to be an election. Kerwin filled that so that we, we had our people. And John came back when, when we had a, other longtime board member move across the district line, and so was no longer eligible to serve on the board. And both of these gentlemen served when Diana and I were parents of schoolchildren, and we, we felt that our own kids received a great education from the district under your leadership, and, and I will miss you. And I'm so grateful that you came back and were a steadying force on the board. And so you have my sincere gratitude from all the years that we've worked together. So thank you. That's my report.
Thank you. And I also want to add in some, some thanks there to Kerwin and John for coming back to the board. This is their last board meeting, as the new term begins at the next meeting in July. And so I want to add on my, my sincere thanks for serving on the board again and be willing to take on responsibility of serving the taxpayers on this board. So thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments on the superintendent's report? Seeing none, then we'll move on to old business. The first is the conducting of the budget hearing per state statute. We have to conduct a public hearing on the budget that has been published in the paper, and so now's the time if anybody wants to come in. in the paper, and so now's the time, if anybody wants to come forward and address the board on the budget, you're welcome to do so. I don't have anybody jumping up at this point, coming forward, so, as is a long-running feature here, we often don't have public input at the budget hearing, we're always glad to take it when we do. So, seeing that, that'll, do we have any board members have any questions about the budget? That is the next item, so why don't we just move on into item B, adoption of the 2017-2018 budget, and I'll open it up for questions or discussion or action on the budget. I would move adoption of the budget.
I'd second that.
There's a motion and a second to adopt the 2017-2018 budget. Any further discussion on that?
Just a, a couple things we may want to highlight a little bit, as far as, there is some money that we are projecting to take from capital outlay in order to balance the budget at the end of the year, is that correct?
There's $300,000 budgeted.
Okay. Then the $160,000 at the bottom of the budget, yeah, this will serve closely, if you wanted to speak to that a little bit.
Okay, that $160,000 is coming from two different funds. $100,000 in the capital outlay fund is because we have money on hand that we will be spending on the parking lot project to bring that to completion, and the $60,000 in the pension fund is because the pension fund levy went away when the new state aid formula came in. Pension fund has now been folded into the general fund, so schools have a few years to keep the pension fund open and spend it down till the money's gone. And right now, here, and has about $60,000 left in the pension fund, so I budgeted it to be spent next year, because we typically have a few people each year that retire and take advantage of that.
So, that will actually zero out the next year.
I would anticipate that.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions about the budget? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote on the motion to approve the budget. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. That motion carries. We'll now move on to the first reading of, let's see here, the strategic plan, which is policy AA, policy AAA, and policy AAB, and policy AAC. These are four policies that kind of constitute the strategic plan of the district, including the district philosophy, the vision statement, the philosophy and belief statement, and the district goals and objectives. So, this is a first reading, there won't be any action today, but is there any comment or discussion on those policies?
These are the guiding principles that the school district stands for, and trying with the guidance from, from your, from the board and, and working with the officers, trying to make these more of a living document by having them open for review before we go into the goal-setting session tonight. You'll finalize them so that they get a new date next time, but if you have any concerns after looking over them, they're the first in your three-ring binder, or they're on your digital screens, whichever way you want to, want to look at them, but I am not requesting any changes, but I'm certainly open to them, because this is the fundamentals of what a Board of Education does, is the guiding principles for which we operate. And if you have anything that you like looked at and want to send me a note so that it can be addressed before the next time, we can do that as well. As Chairman said, after the philosophy, the mission, and the vision, then we've got a series of statements about what we believe, about children, about our resources, about achievement, about accountability. They're basic value systems, and then it ends with the goals and objectives, as far as what we would like students to be able to do when they leave our district, including the concepts of language, mathematics, science, and social studies, technologies, the ability to solve problems, the ability to communicate, the ability to actively practice American citizenship, the ability to be productive in the world of work, and the importance of maintaining social, physical, and emotional well-being. And so, that's the, that's the guiding principles, and wanted to make sure that you were aware of those, and then that they are updated. They've been looked at in '07, and they were looked at in '12, and, and as I continue to get better at the review process, this is the key to everything else we do, is the guiding principles of the district.
Any further discussion on those items?
I think as they're written, they look good. I can remember being involved in a fairly lengthy discussion back in the '90s when a lot of this was developed, and they may have been slightly changed over the years, but the, the basic concepts are still there, and I think they've served as well.
Seeing no other discussion, we'll consider that the first reading, and we'll move on to item D under old business, which is the first reading on policy AH, which is the revised conflict of interest disclosure and authorization policy, along with two forms to be used as part of that. So, this is also in the policy book, where we have the old policy on one side and the new policy on the other side. This comes from Associated School Boards, after the statute on the conflict of interest laws were, when that statute was passed this last session, this updates the policy to follow the new statute.
Mr. Christopherson's done the due diligence on this, so I would, I would be, I'd be weak to answer this with Kelly sitting here, I just assumed if you had questions, you'd direct him his way.
There's a deadline for us to get these filled out. I don't know if there's a deadline in the law, but the advice from the Associated School Boards is to try and do them all at the annual meeting, which is the first meeting in July.
Okay.
Kelly, from what I understand, then, this reflects the changes in law that the legislature put into place this year that actually helps define and clarify some things, is that basically true? So, it probably makes it a little easier to work with?
Yes, that was their intent. The main thing that makes it easier to work with is the, where they come out and said that the contract has to be at least $5,000, and you have to have a direct benefit from that contract, and then that's when you would ask for a waiver.
So, for example, what we had earlier, wouldn't, wouldn't need to, you know, the one we approved earlier, wouldn't need to be approved because it's less than $5,000 if we had the same thing next year?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
There are some things that still have to be disclosed, the board doesn't act on them, they just get disclosed and put into the minutes. We'll have to sort all that out as they come in. When we get ready for the annual meeting, I'm sure we'll be looking back at the fifty-some waivers that were approved last year and try and sort out which ones we need to do again.
Some of them are good change.
Yeah, so again, this is the first reading, so no action today. Any further discussion or comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll consider that the first reading on policy AH, and then we'll move on to the second reading, and action on the 2017-2018 handbooks.
As you go to that, Mr. Chairman, there are others in here that have been introduced to you, we're just not tackling all of them at each meeting. That was a decision by the board officers. Make sure we're concentrating on one area at a time, so the booklet contains others as they're introduced, but they'll stay in the booklet until, until we clean these up and you're ready to move them. Are you comfortable with that description, Garrett, or what we? Okay, so, that's why we're not touching everything in the book.
I would like to say that this is nice.
Thank you.
This is nice, and it'll be a lot easier for new board members coming in to understand as we're looking at, as the board looks at policy and rewrites, adopts, and reviews. That is a nice addition.
Thank you.
Now, where do the handbooks, and they have the digital copies of all those?
Yep. So, again, we're on the second reading for the 2017-2018 handbooks for all of the different schools and programs. I'd move approval of the handbooks.
I'd second that.
It's a motion and a second to approve the 2017-2018 handbooks. I'm assuming there are no changes on them since the last reading, being we don't have anything? Any further discussion on that motion to approve?
Just as we have the two new board members here, just a little bit of a clarification, the policy book is the guiding rules that we must all follow, that's, that is set by the Board of Education, and then we follow that. Then there are the application of those rules that fall into handbooks. Each year, when the board approves those, those then have the same drive as the manual, but as the policy, except they have a one-year lifespan, so that each year, the board is aware if something has changed in there. And so, the recommendation is to have the handbooks approved by the outgoing board, because they've been living with the results and would be aware of something that was proposed, so then you have a year to review before there'd be any changes in the handbooks. So, that's the process that's going on tonight.
So, I think we're still on the, so, still a motion on the floor here? Any further discussion or action, or, not action, but discussion or questions? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote on the motion to approve the 2017-2018 handbooks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. That motion carries. That concludes the old business, we have one item of new business. This is a new hire for Amanda Hader, who has been hired as the administrative assistant in the curriculum office.
I'd move approval. Second? I'll ask to abstain, since I'm related to a manager's my daughter, so.
Okay, so we will do this by a roll call, vote. So, any further discussion on that motion? Do we have a motion? That moves a second in, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the business manager to call the roll.
Hader.
Abstain.
Van Berkom.
Yes.
Bischoff.
Yes.
Hellcat, yes. Wheeler.
Yes.
So, you have four yes and one abstention.
So, that motion carries, and that completes the new business. Before we go into recess, I do want to ask our outgoing board members, if they want to make any closing statements or comments as we finish up the public portion of the meeting, or the, actually, the televised portion of the meeting.
Sure. Well, I'd like to say a thank you to all of our staff and all the patrons of our school district and all of our students, everybody here tonight, all the administrators and school board members, you know, for the opportunity to serve with you during the past three years, and for some of you a lot longer, up to 12 years. I, I thank you for your service to the school district and especially to our students, and I'd like to thank our new board members for being willing to serve, and want to wish you well in your service, and wish everyone here well in their future. Thank you.
I would echo a lot of what Kerwin said. The first 12 years as a board member, I felt privileged to represent the taxpayers of the district, but there was, it was so much bigger than that, getting to understand how a school district runs and to see the staff, how they worked with children. Every single staff member in the district plays a key role in the educational development of a child, and that's what I always looked at for those 12 years, and I never would have dreamt I'd have the opportunity to come back and serve again, and this one year, three months, has been better than the first 12 years I put in, and it's probably a lot to do with me and the way I've looked at it, but this community embraces education, and we've got a lot of, lot of great children in our system, and we got children that obviously struggle in our system, but we got great staff that are there trying to help them along the way, and we got a great administrative team, and I've been privileged to work with a strong board all the years that I was on the board, and that is something that I'll miss, I'll truly miss that, and I wish the district continued success, I wish the best of luck to the new two board members coming in, and starting in two weeks, I'll be sitting back with my feet up on Monday night, watching board meetings for a little bit until I kind of got to let that go, so, thanks to everybody.
Well, let's give our two board members a round of applause. Thank you very much again for your service. With that, we will have a recess here, and then we'll come back into session for a work session on our school board goals. So, I will, it's about 6:15, so I'll entertain a motion to go into recess till about 6:30.
So, move. Second.
There's a motion, a second to go into recess, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries, we are in recess until 6:30.